Stay in the know and make your voice heard on different projects happening in your neighborhood and throughout Hillsborough County by visiting Hillsborough County's Engagement Hub, the online home for outreach and listening efforts. From parks and recreation projects to roadway improvement plans, your input plays an important role in shaping the future of Hillsborough County. So make your voice heard by visiting hcflgov.net/hcengage.
Don't let mosquitoes ruin your day. Bite the bite by removing standing water on your property. Standing water of any kind is a breeding ground for mosquitoes. Do your part and help reduce the mosquito population. For more tips and tricks, visit hcflgov.net/bitethebite.
Psst, hey, would you do me a favor? Grab your phone or smart device and open up that camera. Then point it right here at the QR code. Do you have it? Oh, wait a second. When you see the link pop up on your screen, give it a tap. You ready? Boom! Welcome to the Hillsborough County official YouTube channel. We've got all sorts of videos here, all about what makes our community such an awesome place. From local events and community highlights to what's in the perfect Cuban sandwich, we've got it all. We're always adding new things, so while you're here, be sure to subscribe and hit that notification bell so you'll never miss a new video. Here's that QR code again, just in case you missed it. Go ahead and check it out. Ooh. This must have fallen out of that video. This really is the perfect Cuban sandwich.
Good evening, welcome to the Board of County Commissioners Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the annual update of the capital improvement schedule of the plan as well as the adoption of future land use map amendments to the comprehensive plan. The Board will also concurrently consider the proposed rezoning of properties that are the subject of future land use map amendments. I'll now request that the Planning Commission staff begin with the first item on this evening's agenda.
Thank you, sir. Melissa Leinhart, Planning Commission staff. Would you like to dispose of the one proposed continuance before we get started with item A1?
The B items?
Yep.
Sure, we can do that.
I don't know if the applicant is here, would like to come up to address items B1 and B2?
It's my understanding there's been a request to remand and to continue these two items.
Good. Is that right? All right. William Malloy, 325 South Boulevard, Tampa, Florida. We very respectfully ask to continue this to the next available hearing. We had a bit of a disagreement with Development Services as to the height of our project. We've come to terms with them. We, I think we're in a supportable position, but to make it official in the staff report and get the approval that we need for this to move forward, we need to continue it.
Okay, and staff doesn't have any issues with that, right?
No issues, and the remand date of November 13th is, it's poised to make that remand date for notices purposes.
Okay, it's my understanding no one's here signed up to speak on this, right? So, okay, so can we?
So moved.
Yeah, we are vote to, first of all, to remand.
Second.
Of 220671 to November 13th at 6:00 PM. The motion, Commissioner Collins, and Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
And then I guess we also need a vote to continue CPA 2218. I guess there's not a date set yet.
There is no date for 2024 solidified yet, so it will not be to a date certain.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Collins, and Commissioner Wostel. No comments, please accord your vote. Motion to continue.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Okay, A1.
That brings us to item A1, and Ms. Melissa Dickens will be presenting this item. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Melissa Dickens, Planning Commission staff. This item is a kind of a routine annual update to the comprehensive plan. It comes before you each year. It addresses those projects within your adopted CIP that affect a level of service within the comprehensive plan. So this is the FY '24 through FY '29 Capital Improvement Section Schedule of Projects Update. A little bit about some of the context. Again, this is required by state statute that it be updated each year. Those projects that are identified by the county to affect an adopted level of service are included. This update is accomplished by ordinance, and the plans of other agencies are also adopted by reference. This chart shows a summary of the FY '24 through FY '29 Scheduled Projects by Program. You can see there are a total of 208 projects that are identified to be included in the Schedule of Projects for a total of approximately $3.09 billion. And again, this is not your full CIP, but rather a subset of it. This chart shows how the level of service priorities are identified within the Capital Improvement Section Schedule. You can see the majority of the projects, approximately 47% are expected to address a deficiency. Approximately 23% are expected to maintain a level of service, and then 30% are for future growth. And this is consistent with comprehensive plan policy in the Capital Improvement Section. Planning Commission staff performed a consistency review for the level of service projects, the schedule of projects, with the policy goals, objectives, and policies within your comprehensive plan. We find that this proposed CIS schedule is consistent with Capital Improvement Section policy about how project funding should be expended. It's also consistent with, excuse me, there is a type of there, so it's a One Water, objectives 4.2 and 4.3, which request that county infrastructure and facilities be directed into the urban service area. And then also your Coastal Management Section, objective 5, that limits public expenditures for infrastructure and facilities in the coastal high hazard area. And your Planning Commission recommends, or excuse me, found that FY '24 through FY ' '29 CIS schedule consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan and is recommending adoption by ordinance this evening. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? If there's no discussion, can we revoke vote for adoption of the ordinance? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, and Commissioner Owen. No comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. All right, the C items?
Yes, that brings us to item C1, which will be presented by Ms. Carla Yanos.
That was awesome. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is Carla Yanos, presenting on behalf of Gillian Massey. This is HCCPA 23-07. This is privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment on 9.68 acres in size. The request is going from Residential Plan 2 to Residential 9. No, it's not going. I pushed it again, yeah, okay. The, this, this plan amendment was part of the April 2023 cycle. It isn't within the, it is within the rural area, and it's also within the Riverview Community Plan and the South Shore Area Wide Systems. Now, more particular, you can find this property located right off of Big Bend Road and Triple Creek Boulevard. And here from the aerial graph that we have, it is located, again, on the north side of Big Bend Road, and it's west of Triple Creek. So surrounding the property, there are single-family detached homes. And then over to the east, you'll find a daycare and neighborhood amenities center with a playground. And overall, the character of this area is single-family detached on large lots, and you do have the Triple Creek Plan development, which has, you know, varying lot sizes as well.
Hmm. It's missing content. The pictures can't be displayed. Let's close it out. And then reopen it. Mm-hmm. I just restarted it. Technology, I know how it is. The next one, right? There you go.
Perfect. Okay. Sorry about that. So here we have, we did, staff conducted a site visit to the property, and we took several pictures. Here you'll have the wide view. It's the Westford facing on Big Bend Road, so, and you could see the subject site on the right. And then here we have facing east on Big Bend Road, and the subject site is on the left. Now, as you observe through these pictures, you'll see that it's single-family detached. It kind of gives you that rural type of character. And this is facing west on Big Bend Road towards the single-family dwellings on Lover's Lane. Now, this is a vacant public land that borders the subject site to the west, so right next to those single-family detached lots that are homes that are on large lots, you have this giant vacant piece of land. And then it continues on to the subject site. And here is facing south on Big Bend. Those are the single-family dwellings right across the street from the subject site. That's that large subdivision of Triple Creek that I was mentioning earlier. Here, facing northeast, you have the public school at the distance, so you can see it from there, and then a large communication tower. Now, the adopted future land use of the property is Residential Plan 2. The entire area is residential planned, immediately adjacent. This typically allows you, like, agricultural, residential, suburban-scale neighborhood, community commercial, office uses, multipurpose projects, clustered mixed use. Non-residential uses are subject to locational criteria, which this spot does not meet. And the site is completely, again, surrounded by RP2. Now, the request is going to Residential 9 Future Land Use category. This allows for residential suburban-scale, urban-scale neighborhood, commercial, et cetera. This ultimately transitions the use from being a rural, kind of suburban-like, to urban in nature. Now, under the existing future land use, you can have up to one dwelling unit. So currently, the adopted future land use of RP2, it allows you to have one dwelling unit per five acres. Unless you're in a planned village on 160 acres or more, then you can have up to two dwelling units an acre. But in this case, this is not, so they are allowed one dwelling unit. Now, under the proposed future land use category, they can have up to 77 dwelling units. Now, the big difference between, obviously, the intensity is you're going from 105,000 square feet to 210,000 square feet. Now, overall, this does introduce urban-scale neighborhood, commercial, and some other urban uses, and it does increase that intensity from 0.25 floor area ratio to 0.50. Now, Planning Commission staff reviewed the request for consistency with the rural aerial policies. According to Policy 4.1, it directs growth into the rural area to be at a base of one dwelling unit per five acres. So the request to have it go to Residential 9 is inconsistent with that policy direction. Furthermore, we look at neighborhood and community development policies 16.1 through 16.3. It talks about compatibility and the protection of the surrounding neighborhood. And that increase of density and intensity doesn't help at all with the compatibility. It doesn't allow for gradual transition of uses. It's, it's very, basically like jumping into a higher intensity. And in addition, since this property is in the rural area, the urban service boundary is located closer to, you know, 301 and Big Bend Road. And there you do see the increase in densities, which is appropriate. But in this area in the rural area, you see RP2 surrounding the property, and then it follows by natural preservation, which you can find the enlarged future land use maps in your packets. Now, overall, the Planning Commission found the proposed comprehensive plan amendment 23-07 inconsistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. I will be gladly here to answer any questions you may have. I know that, you know, most of you had quite a bit of questions regarding the rural area policies, so feel free.
All right, thank you. Is the applicant here? Good evening. Each representative will have three minutes.
If there's any issues, we'll just restart it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman of Board Members, Todd Pressman, 202nd Avenue South, number 451, St. Petersburg. This is the Riverview Retirement Residence Project. I let you know that through three public notices and sign postings, we've had zero opposition or any comments from the public, and we've had two community meetings. So the public has been well noticed and made aware of this project. Orient you a little bit more to the site, as we're in South County, as Carla has told you, at the end of Big Bend Road. However, we disagree with the intensities. You can see there are a number of industrial or institutional uses right next door, large lot area, or small lot residential existing, which is 1/8 to 1/10 of a lot, which is a lot different than what Carla had presented to you. What I'd like to make you aware is that Carla's report, and the Planning Commission, it's not a complaint or criticism, how they do business is they do not consider in any way, shape, or form, and will not consider the companion use, which you're going to hear about, which clarifies and puts in stone exactly what this use is, how it will act, how it will look, how it will be on an inch-by-inch basis. So when you look at comp plan policies, which you did not hear from Carla, Objective 1.6 is to promote, facilitate, and provide housing opportunities for the older population, which is what this is for. Policy 1.6.15, promote and prioritize senior housing and opportunities to age and place, which is exactly what this use is for. This is a unique site and unique location. And what I want to make you aware of, as Carla did, is that this site would be permissible, and this is her slide, for 105,415 square feet. That's a lot different than what she proposed or presented to you as a very rural area. And under the transportation analysis that was submitted, this would be a reduction from the maximum use of 3,569 reduced trips. But what's also critically important is that the Triple Creek Village Center, and this is also not presented to you, right next door, a budding, allows office and commercial at four-story, multifamily at three-story. And additionally, under the Riverview Concept Map, the Planning Commission's Riverview Community Plan, we are located in the mixed-use development. So it's well positioned under the Riverview Community Plan and well positioned under the comp plan amendments, and there are other policies in the comp plan that also support it, including Objective 1.1, Goal 1, Policy 1.6.1, Policy 16.2, buffering and screening. We've done tremendous buffering and screening for this project from the residential. That's one reason why through many public notices and sign postings and community meetings, we've had zero comments on the record in opposition to this request. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristi, and I am here on behalf of Hawthorne. So with this future land use amendment is a companion PD. So this future land use amendment is not for the level of intensity that's being analyzed by Planning Commission staff. It is specifically for this use that ties it together. So one of the unique things about Hawthorne is we are a development company, a construction company, as well as a senior housing operator. We currently have seven buildings in Florida, we have 90 throughout the United States, and our most recent building is Osprey Heights in Valrico. So we went through this exact same process with a comp plan amendment and a companion PD for this project a couple of years ago. It opened last year and was completely full in six months. That showed us that this community had a demand for the kind of senior housing that we are offering. That's why we were looking for another site in this area. So let me give you a little background on who our residents are. So our target demographic is late 70s, early 80s. They're currently living at home, they're widows or widowers, and they're looking for a community environment, and they're looking for supportive services. They're generally in good health, but it's time to get some help with some regular everyday things. We offer residents private independent suites with kitchenettes, weekly housekeeping and linen service, as well as three chef-prepared meals a day served restaurant-style in a central dining room. About 30% of our building is shared common space for all residents. We essentially have a senior center within our building. We've got an onsite beauty salon, movie theater, activity rooms, gym, chapel, as well as outdoor amenities for our residents. We offer 24 hours, seven days a week onsite management, as well as luxury van transportation for residence uses. And everything is included in one monthly fee. It's your suite, it's three meals a day, it's all of the services, it's all-inclusive. So speaking of traffic, so one of the great things about our project compared to anything else that could be developed on 10 acres is that our traffic volumes are incredibly low. Between the age of our residents, between the onsite services that we have, the van transportation, as well as the fact that during peak hours is when our meals are served, our traffic impacts are incredibly low. And we're at the end of Big Bend, so we have very limited impact to the traffic concerns that I know that we've had on Big Bend. I appreciate your time, and I'm here if you have any questions. Can you state your name again for the record, please? Sure. Kristi Neznanowski.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Okay, we're going to hold off on the board discussion or vote after we hear the rezoning request. Commissioner Owen, did you want to speak now or wait till after? Okay. Can we, I have C2. I guess we need to swear those in that are going to speak. Anyone?
Please stand and raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you.
Commissioners, the next item then is again item C2. Again, for the record, Brian Grady, Hillsborough County Development Services. Next item on the agenda is item C2. It's related item to the Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2307. It's PD 23-0511. The request is resoned from agricultural rural to a planned development to accommodate 170-bed life care treatment facility with two manager units. This is located on the north side of Big Bend Road, west of Triple Creek Boulevard. And staff's review, based on the surrounding development pattern, as noted in the staff report regarding the Triple Creek development to the east, with the institutional and commercial uses and multifamily permitted to the east, and with the surrounding development pattern and the buffering and screening provided by the applicant. And setbacks, the staff did find the request compatible and approvable, subject to conditions, and also subject to approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, which would permit the RES 9 and 9-unit break for the unit count proposed for the development. Staffs available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. The applicant will have up to 10 minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners. Again, Todd Pressman, for record, 202nd Avenue South, number 451, St. Petersburg. So again, this is the Riverview Retirement Residence. We're very proud to tell you that Development Services, excuse me, the zoning hearing master supports this request. The zoning department supports this request. Transportation has no objections. And again, we've had zero opposition in the record between three public hearings and sign postings on the site. We conducted two community meetings. So you're familiar with the orientation of the site. This is the conceptual site plan, and what we've done is provided tremendous distancing and buffering on all four sides of the proposed project. Priority points is we're providing bigger setbacks, less height, bigger buffers. The use is quiet, low trips, congregates senior housing, no odors, low impact, very walkable. Your code recognizes already that 2.5 beds or residence equals one dwelling unit under zoning code. There's no similar use in the vicinity, and there's been significant approved commercial and suburban residential right next door. And again, under Futuraneous category, 105,000 square feet would be permissible here. This provides a much-needed housy type, as there are no other similar senior housing programs in the Riverview area. This is where we want to keep our grandmothers and grandfathers. Now, as I've shown you, the off-site buffering is very good, and you can see the intensity of the institutional uses next door. But again, what's critical and what's unique about the site, particularly with the RP2, is that it is uniquely situated next door to the Village, Triple Creek Village Center, and the institutional use of the schools, which there's a lot of interaction with, with the senior center. They typically will hire students to work at the site for dinner services and lunch services, and as well, there's tremendous intensity here, as we spoke about already, right next to the site. And again, Riverview Community Plan puts us in the mixed-use category. Other comp plan categories include promoting diversity in housing type and style to counter a generic subdivision look. I referred to these other two policies. I've referred to these other two policies requiring buffering areas and screening devices between the uses. Mixed-use commercial residential, promote diversity in the housing type. And under the Riverview Community Plan, focus and direct development towards walkable mixed-use town center locations, which we're right next door to. So there are many comp plan policies that we meet and that we work with. But again, what's critical here is that in the Planning Commission's review, and again, it's not a criticism of Ms. Lannos or the Planning Commission, it's just the way they review these things, we brought this through under the Futuraneous category as a companion. That's the only way that this project could move forward, and that it makes sense, and that it's viable, and that it's credible. So that report from the Planning Commission overlooks the adjacent uses and intensities I told you about. Looks did not present the Triple Creek Planning Village density and standards, and as well as existing lot standards at one-eighth and one-tenth of an acre, where again, what was presented to you is that there's supposed to be in the area five-acre lots. So in summary for myself, again, it's a unique location. Development Services supports, and your zoning hearing master made a very detailed, in-depth analysis and completely supports this request. Transportation has no objection. No objection through the hearings. The use is unique as being quiet, low trips, walkable, very much needed. I've reviewed many comp plan policies that do support it. The site plan provides great buffering. Kristi will walk you through a few more points, if we may.
Hi, Kristi Neznanowski, for the record. So I just wanted to talk about the site plan a little bit. We worked with our architecture team and our design team to respond to what's happening in this area. We really enjoy this Triple Creek area that's planned for the future, the future commercial next door at a four-story height, and we wanted to offer that gradual transition from residential to the future commercial. The building is three stories, and as you can see, I apologize that the orientation is different than all the other sides you've seen. So the commercial is planned to the top of this site plan. So we've made sure that our entry, our delivery area, our trash enclosure are all oriented on the commercial side of the building. And we've put our stormwater, we have got a wetland that we're saving, as well as additional buffering within our property on the three sides where residential is nearby. We don't directly abut any residential along our property lines. There's off-site buffers as well. So combined, we really have a lot of space between our building and the other uses in the area. We've put our quiet amenity spaces at the back of the site, and we've also provided sidewalks throughout our building. One of our residents' common activities is to walk around the property, and they'll have walking clubs, they'll keep track of their steps, those kind of things. And what we also like is this location gives an opportunity for families in the Triple Creek neighborhood to walk over and see their grandparents or their great-grandparents. And it's an opportunity for our residents to interact and volunteer at the elementary school or the elementary school choir to come over and sing on holidays. And so we're really looking forward to the interaction that can happen with this building in this particular part of the county. And I'm available for questions.
The only other point I'd like to emphasize is, on Development Services in their report, they note specifically the applicant has provided appropriate buffering and screening, and the rezoning for assisted living facility would be consistent with the existing zoning pattern of the area, and that is reflected in the ZHM report. So I would just conclude by saying that what's proposed here under the future land use, but particularly under the concrete of the companion plan, it works. It works at this particular specific area and will work very well. We appreciate your consideration of yourselves, the staffs, and of Ms. Lannos. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? Anyone in opposition? Planning Commission?
Carla Lannos, with Planning Commission staff, presenting on behalf of Gillian Massey. Now, the subject site, indeed, it's located north of Big Bend Road, west of Triple Creek. It has approximately 10 acres. This property is in the rural area. It's in the Riverview Community Plan, and it's in the South Shore area-wide systems. The proposed change to go from Residential Plan 2, right, to Residential 9 was found inconsistent on July 10 of this year by the Planning Commission. It also had an inconsistency finding by Planning Commission staff. Now, the property, by having that Residential 9 Futuraneous category, we need to consider not just one particular use. Once this future land use category is adopted, it is set in stone. Any use can come in after that. So despite that the applicant is asking for an assisted living facility, that is not 100% a guarantee. They can come back and ask for a major modification. So by having the concurrent rezoning tied with that CPA, as Planning Commission staff, we're bound by the comprehensive plan policy, so we look at it individually from a different standpoint. They're two different applications. Two, the increase in density in that rural area is inconsistent with the Comprehensive Plan Policy 4.1, as previously mentioned during the Comprehensive Plan presentation. In the rural area shall be no higher than one dwelling unit per five girls' acres, unless they are identified within a higher-density land use category on the future land use map, meaning existing, or if they are a suburban enclave, planned village, or if it's a planned development pursuant to PEC one-half category. So this is not an existing development, this is a proposed development. And again, we need to look at the Comprehensive Plan, the future land use, on its own, knowing that any other use can come in as well. Now, once we open the doors to that future land use category change, we can introduce any type of higher-intensity urban land uses, which is not intended for that area, it's not of character of that area. What you have surrounding the property is single-family detached, one-story. Nothing in the vicinity exceeds that one-story. The applicant is proposing 170-bed assisted living facility with 140 parking spaces, three stories high. That is quite significant and incompatible with the surrounding uses. Furthermore, the community plan seeks to promote diversity in housing type, and it seeks to style counter generic subdivision look with appropriate compatible buffers and transition to existing uses and adjacent land uses. By providing the stormwater lake on the north side, sure, that might help with the properties to the north, but what about the properties over to the west of that? They're still single-family detached on large lots, and placing a three-story assisted living facility with 170 beds is pretty significant. It's incompatible with that area and incompatible with the Comprehensive Plan policies. Now, overall, the Planning Commission staff finds that the proposed planned development be incompatible with the surrounding area and the intent of the rural area, and the Riverview Community Plan as well. Now, the request does not allow for a development that's consistent with any of the goals, objectives, or policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Now, based on that, Planning Commission staff finds that the proposed development be found inconsistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and I would gladly stand for any questions.
Thank you. Zoning Hearing Master?
The zoning hearing master considered the proposed rezoning of the subject property, which consists of approximately 10 acres of undeveloped land located on the north side of Big Bend Road, 650 feet west of the Flamenco Drive and Triple Creek Boulevard intersection in Riverview. The property is designated as RP2, Residential Plan 2, on the future land use map, and zoned agricultural rural. The property is within the Rural Services area, located within the Riverview Community Plan and the South Shore area-wide systems plan. The zoning hearing master found that the general area surrounding the property consists primarily of residential uses and a school. The Triple Creek planned development surrounds the subject property on the northeast-south, and the tropical acre subdivision is to the west. The applicant is requesting to rezone the subject property to planned development to allow construction of a life care treatment facility with 149 units to accommodate 170 residents, as well as two manager units. The applicant has submitted a concurrent Conference of Plan Amendment CPA 2307, which requests to amend the future land use designation to Residential 9. Development Services staff has found that the applicant is providing appropriate buffering and screening to residential uses, and the proposed planned development would be consistent with the existing zoning pattern of the area. The zoning hearing master noted that aerial views on the property appraiser website show that the subject property is not directly adjacent to any residential uses. The property is separated from residential uses to the west, and also from the north, south of Big Bend Road, and as well as to the east. There is vacant property that is approved for mixed uses. The zoning hearing master concluded with a recommendation of approval of the application to rezone the subject property to planned development, finding it consistent with the Comprehensive Plan and the Land Development Code.
All right, Commissioner Owen?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is one of those tough ones that we're going to have to talk about tonight. You know, when I was a kid in East and South County, the only assisted living we had were houses that were converted over into these almost absurd, where you wouldn't want to put your grandparents or parents. This particular applicant does build an absolutely beautiful community. They have one in Valrico, as was stated earlier, that is located, believe it or not, on Lithia Pinecrest Road. And there's just very low traffic impact, which is something that, to me, is very favorable about these particular communities. And while it is rural, obviously out in the RP2, if you really look, it really doesn't have that much of a rural feel out there. I drove out there and took a look at it, and it really looks like infill, even though that's not what this is, but it really looks like that. You know, I had a lot of concerns up front, just looking at the intensity of the beds, of what that would bring to this particular area, because there's just, there's nothing like that out there. But I say we should talk about that. What the planning came up with is definitely a concern to me, when you start introducing these high reses out there in these particular areas. But Mr. Gormly, when I look around, as was stated, you know, they're doing a good job of providing the buffering to the west, correct? And then to the east, you have residential tropical acres, and then to the north is Triple Creek. I'm trying to understand or make sure that we're not going to get burned on this, on using this for compatibility with other places in the surrounding area. But when I look at this and I see the land that's out there, it looks like everything is pretty much developed around it. So what planning's concern was, which I'm very concerned with too, is introducing this high res into this particular area, but it doesn't look like it could really be used for anything else to be developed that's within striking distance. Could you kind of allude to that a little bit?
Yes, Commissioner, I would agree with that statement. This is an agricultural zone property. The area around it is developed or entitled with planned development or historical tropical acres. If this site were changed to res nine, there's not really land that is proximate to it that could grow that res nine footprint. So I would say that it doesn't create the potential for expansion of a pocket of res nine, because the surrounding land is already developed, entitled, or broken up into individual lot ownerships.
Yeah. And I was concerned too with what's around there for the elderly, but when you look and you see the growth out there, these places, these assisted living facilities are full. And again, going back to the impact that they have on traffic, which is my usually number-one concern, as this board knows, is that these assisted living facilities provide transportation, and it's extremely low impact. Would you agree with that, Mr. Gormly?
Yes, we identified these uses as a very low trip generator for the number of residents that are there.
Yeah. But planning does have a good point on possibly getting burned in the future. I guess with this particular property, I'm not too worried about using it for a comparable property for compatibility, but the property could convert to something else in the future once they get the entitlements. Is that fair to say?
So yes, if the, well, if the plan amendment and zoning were approved, the use would be limited to life care treatment facility. It doesn't preclude the owner from making a request to change that zoning in the future. So that is a possibility. It would not be precluded for them to ask for a change of use. But if both of these were approved, the only thing that could be permitted and developed would be the life care treatment facility unless the zoning was changed by the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay. Because that's what I'd like, that to be etched in stone, that it has to be this type of facility, because again, this applicant does a wonderful job, but that's something that, you know, I wish we could do at this particular stage. Is that a possibility?
Commissioner, we have talked about options for doing that, but none of them are presented that could be done here tonight as part of this hearing. Discuss some options of adding language to the Comprehensive Plan that is site-specific, or looking at some other Futuraneous categories or other options for trying to accommodate these growing need for these uses without having to expand the Futuraneous to accommodate them. But those are all prospective options that could be considered in the future, and it's not positioned tonight to have that action taken.
There's nothing we could do to take that action tonight.
Tonight, correct.
Yeah, because, you know, I worry about the applicant, they probably seem shovel-ready the way, when you have these type of comp plan with the zoning, that means they're pretty much shovel-ready to go. So I would hate to, you know, put them on a time constraint, but, you know, I'm inclined to move for approval. I'm not going to do that right now, because I would like to hear from my colleagues on this one, because it is such a unique property. So I'm going to sit back and listen. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you. I'll just go for two parts of that, because it seemed like two parts to me. And the first part isn't really what I was going to talk about, but you had mentioned that you believed the whole area was developed. But when I see, and maybe we could put this map up, I don't know what this is exactly, but, I mean, I can't identify where it is in this book, but it... Here's what the map is. Thank you.
So do you, would you like an aerial or...
This, this one. It's bigger.
I have the wide view here.
Yeah. Maps hiding. Okay, there we go. Okay. So, and just because you had mentioned that, but I'm looking at this map, and that finger out there, plus all that other, looks like, yeah, RP2 right now, is that true? So that's RP2. That could be much more intensively developed, if somebody tried to develop it or use this. I guess you were maybe talking about live local, but I would see that there's lots of opportunities, if I'm not mistaken, but...
So Commissioner, that area, the finger, is part of the Triple Creek planned development PD? What I was describing is if there is a pocket of res nine, that there, for that pocket to grow.
Oh, okay. So you're saying that that area couldn't become res nine?
I'm saying, yeah, that this site here, the subject site, there's not vacant...
It's all developed out, even though we're not seeing it.
Developed or entitled, so that for that...
I just wanted to...
To grow.
Thank you for confirming that. I just wanted to understand what it was when I saw that, and just because of the comments that were made. But I had talked to Mr. Gormly about this, because I get concerned about these, and I keep struggling for a way to get through them. I think we, as a whole, will have many more in the future, many more requests, proposed plans, I would hope, I would think we would have a need for it. But I had talked to Mr. Gormly about this, because I get concerned about these, and I keep struggling for a way to get through them. I think we, as a whole, will have many more in the future, many more requests, proposed plans, I would hope, I would think we would have a need for it, for assisted living-type facilities in communities. And as we all agree, that's something that is a good thing. There's a lot of, you know, traffic for all other reasons, for keeping people close to their families in these neighborhoods, that that's all desirable. However, the only tool we have, I feel, is actually kind of a crude tool, to change the residential RP2 to rez nine, is really just, when you do that with the future land use, as you pointed out, any of this lovely stuff you see may not happen, even if they come in for a rezoning, if we're told the particulars of the rezoning in that, except for the layout of the map, the pictures we see and everything, are not anything that a developer is held to. And, I mean, I'm not saying that anybody would, but someone could come in next month, come in next year, and change this designation, and they do have the higher land use designation. I found that disturbing, and I kept, I've actually for a while struggled with this exact issue and how we could deal with it. And I don't believe that there is a solution tonight, but I do think we have something that I think would be valuable for the future and long-term in terms of this. And I talked to Mr. Gormly about a specific publicly initiated, that our office presents to us, on a specific land use, a future land use category that would accommodate this, so that the designation would be in the future land use, and that would make it a set use. And until maybe there was a commission in the future, for some reason, that would want to change that, but that gives us much more assurance. Now, we don't have that tool in our toolbox right now, but I understand that we could have it. We could do a continuance of this, and we could request that our staff work on this and present, and I think it would be valuable for many more items than this for the future to really put, you know, nail down this designation. And I think it's a valuable designation to nail down. So, I, yeah, I can hear from others, but I guess I would like, I guess I could make a motion to do this, and we could discuss on that. And that would be a motion to continue, and I don't know if it has to be separate, but, and for staff to bring back a publicly initiated, us writing up a future land use plan designation, I guess, for, to govern specifically these long-term care, I don't, you know, assisted facilities, and designate that, because I'm given much more reassurance in that, and I think it's really a needed model that we need.
Second. Okay, we got a motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Owen, Commissioner Winstall.
Well, most everything I was going to say has been said. I don't want the applicant to have to wait unnecessarily. Is it Ms. Neznansky? May I ask you a question? So, just so you understand, we just finished fighting back something similar to this situation. It actually, I'm remembering now, it actually was Mr. Pressman's item, but it was something that was approved by commissioners eight years ago, and it didn't get built into what it was approved for. And during that approval, it was, the intensity of that lot was increased drastically for what it would have been. And then people come back around, for whatever reason, and then they try to utilize that to grow the intensity even more, and you're wildly above what was expected to be there, the impact to the community that would have been there. You're almost a decade later. I had to read a lot to figure that out, thousands of pages almost of backups, and are you close to being shovel-ready? Are you willing to voluntarily, like, say, like, how close you are in the project to being prepared?
Well, I will say, if you use Valrico as an example, we went straight from RPD approval to permitting, which takes a while, through the county, to being under construction and opening. And one thing I do want to be really clear on is that the PD is a rezoning. So this land would be rezoned to the PD that we've presented as part of our application that is limited to only this use, only 170 beds.
I understand, but so is what we just dealt with, but your land is now entitled to rez nine, and so that gets utilized if, in the event you didn't. It does, it just happens to. If it gets sold, not developing how it was, people come back around, it's just what happens, and then they ask for even more entitlements to grow from what was ever originally intended. Even though it was a PD for a hotel was the one we dealt with, if it was going to be like RM20, well, then they came back around, they tried to utilize the fact that it was already entitled to RMU20, conjoin it to another piece of property, and ask for RMU35. And it was something that happened a decade ago, which they would have never had grounds to start asking for, if eight years ago it had not been increased in intensity for a PD for a hotel, which never happened. That's our concern. I fully support your project, I support the need for your project, I support you willing to invest in our community, all of those things. I just want you to understand what the concerns and the risk that we're exposed to tonight by approving this.
One thing I do want to say about Hawthorne is, I have worked for Hawthorne for 10 years, and I have done all their land use and entitlements. We have never sold a piece of land that we got entitled that we didn't build. That's what we do, that's what we're here for. The demand for this use is already in this community, it's already there, and we're ready to put our money where our mouth is. We did 3D model elevations, we're committed to the buffers and the setbacks, we have done everything we can within the code and the county to do exactly what we did last time. We're committed to this use, we're committed to this land, and with your approval, we're ready to move forward.
And I will say, I actually live directly next door to Discovery Village of West Chase, and it had absolutely no traffic impact to the community. I mean, it changed nothing, and it's been open, I think, for now, a year or two. If, I'm trying to think creative, I'm obviously, I'm inclined to support the single-member district commissioner who's in a really hard spot. Thank you very much for voluntarily...
Hold on, Mr. Pressman.
May I make one comment, Mr.?
No, we're in board discussion now.
Just give me one second, Mr. Pressman. If, I don't know what creative way, I see things being negotiated by land use attorneys all the time in these different hearings, and them coming and agreeing to things. If we were to, I do want a carve-out for, I guess, independent living facilities/assisted living facilities, there's a desperate need for it. Is there some type of creative way, if they were willing to agree that, and maybe you don't even need my vote, who knows, but if, that we approved it tonight, but that it was on the grounds that, or if there was some type of an agreement that could be made that if we did come up with a new land use category in six months, or whatever it would be, that suggested that we were going to have one directly to adjust independent living facilities as bed-based, instead of treating it as like an apartment unit base, that something could be initiated to have this change from rez nine to whatever same entitlement through an independent living facility, so that way we don't... The problem is changing the character of the land use map. It's just, there's vultures that are circling, and I understand that's not your problem, but it's something that we have to combat. Is that any possibility of something like that happening? Or is it just, if we say yes to rez nine tonight, that's it, and it's going light brown and, you know, sky's the limit?
So, Commissioner, I'd say if it's voted rez nine tonight, it will be rez nine. So that part, there's really not a good, there's really not an option for changing that dynamic as it exists tonight. If a future category were to be developed that would limit the use to congregate living facilities, there is potential for county-initiated plan amendments. The applicant or the owner could also request that amendment. We would, I think, want, we would want to be sure if we're going to county-initiate something, and I'm sort of speculating of what we could develop and what could happen. We would want to be sensitive that we don't affect any property rights, but the, you know, the concept for something that was a county-initiated, you know, owner could certainly...
No one's louder about property rights than me, right? I get it.
The owner could certainly, you know, make that request, change that category. So...
Okay. I was just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to work towards something that, it sounds like you're going to get delayed, and I'm just, I was trying to work towards something that would prevent that, so I'll yield. Thank you, Chair.
Commissioner Cohen.
I think this has been a very good discussion. I'm not entirely sure that they have, that they should be delayed. They're here with a PD. It would take the act of a board with a new PD to change the zoning later, and because of the constraints on this property, it's about 10 acres, and it doesn't have the ability, as Mr. Gormly said, to expand, I don't see the risk of this board in some point in the future being somehow fooled, or everyone forgetting about what happened. I see that risk as being somewhat small. I think they've made a very compelling case for what it is they are trying to do. I live within a mile of three different assisted living facilities just like this, and honestly, they're a pleasure. They're the only thing that doesn't create, that doesn't create constant queuing problems and traffic problems. And so I'm not surprised that there's no community opposition to this. I think that, I think Commissioner Kemp's idea is great. I think we should definitely create the category and move forward with that on a parallel track, but I don't really think that we should hold them up while we do that. I think that we should approve this, and at the same time, go about protecting the rest of the county in the future by creating a new category. I don't think, they're going to be stuck with the PD that they get, they're going to have to go completely through the process again if they want to change it. And the thing about a PD is, it's totally set in stone. I mean, everything, the parking lot spaces, the building footprint, it's all there, and to change it is going to require them coming back to the board. So I would be happy to go along with the plan for the new category, but I also think we could, I think we should vote to put this forward. Commissioner Owen, I thought your arguments in favor of it were correct and compelling.
Commissioner Cameron Cepeda.
It's a mostly residential area, it was a great location for senior living, a great place to have people in the surrounding area there to bring their parents and grandparents to live close by. There was no transportation, transportation was no objection, as we heard, and no opposition from any neighbors, and I would like to make a motion for approval. If somebody, if they tried to come back in the future, as some of you are concerned about, I mean, it's basically, we just vote no, you know?
Second.
Okay, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda to approve CPA 2307. Second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Myers, you're next, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, you said everything I wanted to say, and that's why we're using our second motion.
Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, this has been a really good board discussion, and I think you see that everybody wants your community to happen, so it's not about that. I guess it's just about the rare, those rare occurrences of getting burned, and I represent the district, and I'm telling you commissioners who everyone's going to yell at if something went south on this, is me. So, crazy scenario, Hawthorne ends up selling their communities, or however they're incorporated, and then somebody has these entitlements. They could build just a regular rez nine, correct? I mean, I know that's a crazy scenario, but it happens every single day in the state of Florida, so...
So if the rez nine were approved, and the major mod, I'm sorry, the rezoning were approved, the only thing that they could build would be that 170-bed life care facility, unless that rezoning were to come back to the Board of County Commissioners and the board approved a different use. The rez nine future land use category would still be there, but the use would be limited to the life care treatment facility, again, unless...
And it would be left up to, so that scenario, that scenario I just gave, which is completely unlikely, would be for, say, another board or this board later on to make a different decision on. So, you know, I'm seeing that this applicant is shovel-ready, and I know I seconded Commissioner Kemp's, but listening to Commissioner Cohen too, and listening to the arguments here, I do believe this applicant is going to be shovel-ready, just from the communities that they've already built, which are wonderful. So, this is a substitute motion then by Commissioner Cepeda, so I'm going to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp.
Well, that would be no second. So, in hearing the discussion, I'll just withdraw, but we'll be talking on that first anyway, but I still hope that we will, it sounds like there's sentiment for doing the, taking the second step. But I would like to know, just for the record, and I'm fine with supporting the original motion, or Commissioner Cepeda's motion, but how long would such a change take, do, would you suggest, or how long before it came back again if we were to continue?
So it would at least, I'll probably take it to April, and I'm speculating when...
Oh, that's a long time.
When the hearings would be scheduled for next, for next year. The text change is a two-hearing process where it gets transmitted and then comes back to the board for adoption. So, you know, April is a realistic timeframe.
I guess I always underestimate the time, that's a long time. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Winstall.
I'm glad I always supported the project, but going forward, every single one of these meetings that we have, every single time, either a land use attorney or planning commission brings up their map, and then they widen out and say, "But, you know, looking down the street, we justify it because of this." I'm going to point back to this very meeting about how we always use that as a justification. Not that, it's never detailed like, "Well, this rez nine was for this living facility only." It's just, look at the color spectrum of the map, and that's why we're approving an adjustment of intensity and density to the area, and that was always my complaint, and I feel like it really exposes this area to that, because it's a sea of light yellow, and now there's just going to be a windfall of people pointing to that light brown area as we go forward. And is it true, is it accurate, that the red spots that are zoned next to it could currently be built as a four-story apartment?
It's the commercial center for Triple Creek, yes.
So, then, just like what happened in West Hillsborough that we just dealt with, the example I pointed to, then, we said it couldn't be expanded, but this is 10 acres, if it gets adjusted up to rez nine, somebody, if they, in the event, for some reason, sold liquidity, God forbid, something weird, and they sold the property, whoever owns that current four-story apartment area, wouldn't they just be able to come in and say, "Well, we're going to buy both of them, and this one's already for four-story apartments, and this one's just rez nine?" So we just need a little bit more commissioners to justify huge apartments right on this area?
Commissioner, that commercial area is part of a larger Triple Creek Plan Development, so their entitlements, it's not a standalone parcel, like, that land has been basically used as a residential and commercial planned village development. So it would be, it would be much more difficult to justify an unwinding of that, because it's already, it's already entitled as one PD under RP2. So taking that piece out would have effects on other parts of the Plan Development that would make it difficult to be supported.
Okay. Yeah, I look forward to the new land use code, though, then, in the review. Thank you.
Okay, no notes in the queue. Excellent discussion. Okay. No notes in the queue. Excellent discussion, and I'll, too, would be supportive. I think Commissioner, Commissioner Cohen said it. I couldn't say anything better than how he explained it. So we got a motion to approve by Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, second Commissioner Myers. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Okay, and then before we entertain the other motion, let's vote on the rezoning 2305-11. Do we have any board discussion? If not, can we remove motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen, to approve RZ 2305-11. Please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
Thank you. Commissioner Kemp, did you want to make a motion--
Yes.
--on the new designation or category?
Yeah. I'll just make a motion that we began, if you would like to--
I would just say, hearing the discussion here, what I would request, if it could make the motion broad, so it's not limited to necessarily a future land use category, that's one of the things that could be considered. Like, I think it would be beneficial to have just options to consider to bring this back. We fully understand what the Board's trying to accomplish, and we'd just like to have the latitude to do that in what I think is the best, best way.
Okay, what you said.
Second.
Whatever that exactly means, but you understand the discussion. I think we're all here wanting to see some answer here, so.
I understand the motion is to--
Have a county-initiated solution to this land use--
Conundrum.
Communal, congregate living facilities, life care facilities, assisted living facilities. Yes.
Well said. So the motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. No other discussion, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right, thank you. Last item.
Okay. Sorry about that. Yes. Wait, it's not displaying the pictures.
This one?
Yes. All right, cool. Thank you. All right. Good evening, Commissioners. Calliyanos with Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 23-12, also known as 7035 Temple Terrace Highway. This is a privately initiated, small-scale comprehensive plan map amendment on approximately 13.2 acres in size. The request is going from residential nine to residential 20. Now, some historical background. The subject site was originally designated as low-medium density residential, so it gave about nine dwelling units an acre, and at some point as well, it had a C2 zoning conformance, which allowed R3 uses, and those R3 uses included multifamily at 18 dwelling units an acre. The property today is developed with 216 dwelling units, and I'll get into more details as we go on. Now, the subject site is located within the East Lake Orient Community Plan. It's within the urban service area as well. And here on the aerial, you can see that the property is right off of Temple Terrace Highway. There is another jurisdiction nearby, which is the city limits of Temple Terrace. Now, we have single-family residential to the south of the property, and to the west, and a portion to the east. Now, to the northeast of the property, you do have some retail, commercial uses that would help support, you know, the surrounding residential. Across from that, from the subject site, on the other side of Temple Terrace Highway, is the Florida College Academy. And then you do have some other single-family detached, single-family residential detached in the vicinity. Now, again, this property is developed with 216 dwelling units an acre. One of the main reasons for their request is, basically, with the acreage that they have, it comes to 16.35 dwelling units an acre. It's insufficient and non-conforming to the residential nine future land use category that they have, so therefore, they are requesting residential 20 to bring it into conformance. Planning Commission staff did take a site visit. Here we have a picture of the entrance of the property. Here is west on Temple Terrace Highway, right in front of that property, and you can see slightly, the subject site is to the left, and then the Florida College campus is to the right. Here you have the view to the east as you enter that residential area. You have a slight view of the residential amenity that they have, and there is a large, as you can see, swale or ditch there that helps with stormwater runoff. These are the existing multifamily apartments that are developed there. And here, again, we have the view of some of the area that is currently undeveloped or potentially just vacant at the current moment. I know that they do have a dog park, which you cannot see on the screen, however, it is in proximity to this location. Here is the basketball court, and I believe they could probably use it as a tennis court as well, so that's a view of the amenities. And then here we have a view of the nearest gas station or the commercial uses over to the northeast. Now, under the adopted, they can have up to nine dwelling units an acre. So as previously mentioned, that gets them 118 dwelling units. So they are, they're non-conforming, so they do have existing 216. By going to the proposed residential 20, they can achieve up to 264 dwelling units. That is a slight increase, however, it is comparable to the area. Now, within this jurisdiction, jurisdictional limits of the Temple Terrace, you see, you have rez 18, which is this brown color over to the west, and you do have rez 18 also to the southeast. You do, you do see throughout the areas well, commercial, office institutional, some semi-public lands. So there is a varying amount of density, and it is comparable to their request. Now, again, under the existing, they can achieve up to 118 or 287,000 square feet of non-residential. Under the proposal, the potential, it's 264 or 431,000 square feet of non-residential. So overall, it does increase slightly, however, it is bringing the property into conformance. Now, Planning Commission staff reviewed it for consistency with the urban service area and compatibility policies, and we did find it consistent. It is in a designated area where we want to see that growth, 80% of the growth in the county. We looked at neighborhood protection and gradual transition, since this is an existing development, and we see the, how it's developed out, and the potential, if they did expand, it would only be towards the frontage, which is compatible with that area. Again, we looked at the community design components and the East Lake Orient Park Community Plan, and it is consistent with all of the policies within the plan. So overall, Planning Commission staff recommends that that proposed comprehensive plan amendment, HCCPA 23-12, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And I'll stand for questions.
All right, thank you. The applicant will have three minutes per representative. Good evening.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioners. My name's Philip Di Maria. I'm a certified planner with Kim Lee Horn. I'm here on behalf of The Avenue LLC, along with Kami Corbett, Hillward Henderson, and Steve Henry. Today, we're petitioning for a future land use change from residential nine to residential 20. The subject property is about 13.32 acres, located directly on Temple Terrace Highway. The residential 20 request is based on the consistency and compatibility with other uses on the corridor, densities on the corridor, but also to reconcile the zoning conformance change that was described by Ms. Yanos. There are approximately, there are 216 multifamily dwelling units on site, on about 10.3 acres, which works out to about 20 dwelling units per acre. There's a large buffer on the south side that promotes compatibility with the residential land uses to the south. That compatibility and consistency on the corridor was looked at, our neighbors to the east in Temple Terrace, as well as our neighbors to the west in Temple Terrace that have rez 18 categories. Heritage Cove, developed at 18 units per acre, and the Park of Valenza, also at 18 units per acre, and that has approximately 775 dwelling units on the property. We also looked at comparable developments along corridors in Hillsborough County, and found that the rez 20 to rez 6 transition was pretty consistent across the board as it relates to high-traffic corridors, slowly transitioning and lowering their density into more single-family neighborhoods. Of course, we looked at the East Lake Orient Community Plan that references a variety of residential land uses, and we found that rez 20 in this request would be consistent with that community plan. Last but not least, we did a full and extensive consistency of the comprehensive plan review that's located in your pack, and staff did a wonderful job analyzing that as well, and we were found to be consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. For that, we are requesting a, this future land use map amendment, and I'll invite Ms. Corbett up to the podium to speak a little bit more. Thank you.
Good evening. Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward Henderson, representing the applicant, who's also the property owner and the operator of the existing multifamily development. This commissioner's is the exact opposite problem than what we just saw. This was, this was an instance where the property was developed, it was CO'd, it came on tax rolls in 1985. In 1985, someone decided it should be nine units to the acre, and they changed the color back, and then you saw it go back to zoning conformance, and here we are again now. We're just simply trying to get a land use that is consistent with the proposed development that's been in operation the entire time. The two acres that are up front, as Ms. Yanos said, they are part of our amenities and probably our stormwater, and we're really just trying to protect against loss or casualty if we're, God forbid, to have a fire or have a hurricane. We want to be able to build back the same number of units that's on the site today, and we're here to answer any questions that you have.
All right, thank you. This is public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item? Not if we can have a motion from the Board.
Second.
Got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Winstall. No other comments, please accord your vote.
Motion carried seven to zero.
All right. With that, we're adjourned.